Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Preciding over this evening's meeting, Chair Zach Bashir-Tosh.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the February 1st, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Bashir-Tosh.
Here.
Vice Chair Cader.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Corr. Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Agenda item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for non-consent public hearing, item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item four, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and are removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving consent items 4A, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item five, Consent Public Hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by commissioner, staff, or member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed incorporating all of staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
Vice Chair Cader, thank you.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Biddle, thank you. Commissioners, please cast your vote. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item six, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Okay, now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak, then those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given an additional five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a clear and concise way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you very much. I would ask that Assistant Planner Ashley Knight come to the podium. She'll be presenting this project tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Knight. I'm an Assistant Planner with the Planning Division for the City of Bakersfield. Item 6A is a request to approve conditional use permit located at the southeast corner of Alta Vista and Goodman. The request is to allow residential uses in the commercial zone. The C1 zone allows residential uses permitted through a conditional use permit. The application requests a two-story, 15,410-square-foot building with eight one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. The new development will be part of a Kern County-approved apartment complex. The Kern County Planning Commission approved a 68-unit multifamily housing development on June 8th, 2023, which allowed five apartment buildings, a swimming pool, a spa, fitness center, picnic areas, and open space. Public notification for this project was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet and published in the local newspaper. No written comments were received. STACK recommends approval with no changes to previously approved conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. I'm Bob Swanson, Swanson Engineering. I'm the engineer for this project. We permitted the other buildings through the County of Kern. That got approved in June, and I'm sorry, shoot. Forgive me.
It's okay.
We permitted the other buildings in this project through the county. This one little area never was annexed, so the last building is in the city, and we're completing the project now. The proposal we have is seven, seven? We have seven buildings?
Yes.
Seven buildings, one with the community center. It's going to be an upscale apartment unit. There's no government funding to it. It'll be market rate. It's not a low-income development. The owners care very much to improve the neighborhood. We'll be putting curb gutter sidewalk around the facility, which is lacking right now. The Shaky's Pizza Building will be taken down, which has been a source of an eyesore for quite a while, and also a place for vagrants and other people to habitate. So I think this project will be a benefit for the entire community in that area. You have any questions? You can call me. The owner, Scott Hare, is over here. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one else, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express any opinions on the matter. It is only a time to ask questions. Commissioner Strickland?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Is that, that's appropriate this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the first question I had involves a site plan and some of the other discussion around the fencing. I know I've, for public record, I've emailed a couple of these questions. I did get some responses, but I kind of want to follow up on these. So the site plan shows that it's going to be a chain-link fence around the facility. The operational statement lists it as being a wrought iron fence. I think of the June 8th County Commission, it was described as a decorative metal fence. Can you elaborate? Is this going to be an eight-foot wrought iron fence?
We would like the option of a six-foot or an eight-foot, but it will be a wrought iron fence, yes. It will not be chain-link.
And would the applicant be willing to commit to an eight-foot?
Yes. Yes.
Cool, thank you. Just going back on some of the communication for that, I'd also asked about, the site plan doesn't show it, but there is a monopole tower just southwest of the building five. It does have screening on the ground floor level, so apartments in the southwest side of that aren't going to see that monopole or aren't going to see directly. Apartments in the second floor kind of going to have a direct view of that. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Would the applicant be willing to discuss landscaping plans to block that view for second-story applicants or second-story residents?
I don't know that there's a lot of room to do that with planting. Is that what you're talking about with larger trees?
Yeah, or any landscaping. The landscaping plan doesn't show anything between that, I'm assuming, city-owned monopole and second-floor apartments.
I don't know that, I don't know that we have room to put a large tree there.
Okay.
But if we have room, I think the applicant would be fine with planting a 24-inch box tree in that location.
This, this is sort of fed off of some of the public comment from the commissioners' meeting of the county. Is the plan to construct all buildings at the same time and then lease concurrently?
That's the intent right now, yes.
So you'll grade everything at the same time?
Yes.
Sticks at the same, okay, cool, thank you.
Yes, there will be a staging of it. Every building will not finish at the same time.
Got it, yep. And then feeding off of the operational statement related to security, I know the majority of this is in county, so I'm not really talking to the county side, but I am generally talking about the facility. Security is going to be addressed at a later point, so there's no alarms, no cameras, no security. I think some of the community outreach was they were concerned about security for the whole area. Is that correct that you're going to address security, camera, and alarms after the facility is constructed and based on applicant needs?
We'll be doing some infrastructure with conduits under the pavement to specific locations on the site, so that at a later time, if there's a need, we will have the wiring available to be put in without tearing up the site.
Got it. So the applicant's committing that they're going to go ahead and pre-lay the conduit and the networking needed, so that they don't tear up the grading after the fact?
Yes.
Cool, all right, that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Cader?
Thank you. This question is for staff. I just had a question about the process as it pertains to a project that is part in the county and part in the city. Do these parcels become, can a parcel merger occur when one jurisdiction is the county and one is the city?
No.
So then, from what I'm seeing on the site plan, parking access, things that we typically require for parcels are all being provided by the county land? Is that accurate?
There will be shared access agreement required between these parcels, between the city parcels and the major development. There'll be a shared access, shared parking, because the city-county boundary actually bisects the parking on the south side of that building five.
And so, yeah, so, and so we've allowed the parking for our project, the city project, to be on another parcel, even though it's a C1?
It is on, because it's, because it's just parking, it actually straddles a parcel line. The parcel line does not specifically go at the end of the parking stall or at the beginning of the parking stall, so that it's acceptable to have parking as long as there's not necessarily utilities running across lot lines.
And then, okay, lots of questions about that, but it's very academic questions, not pertaining to them. A question I did have from the staff report, there was mention of future annexation. Has there been conversations about annexation?
When this application was initially submitted, yes, there were comments about annexation in staff's request. The city's request was for the submittal of an annexation application, but that did not occur.
So then there's no active plan for annexation to the city at any given date?
We have nothing on file.
Okay. I think those are my questions for now, yep.
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Cader's question, because I think in the presentation with Mr. Boyle, at our last meeting, we talked about the city having identified county properties to annex in and asking those property owners if they would voluntarily annex. Is that something that we could do for, you know, for this application?
We already did ask that they would annex in, and as evident, but we don't have any request, I take that as a no.
My, okay, then a follow-up question is, does that, is that, are there cost requirements on the applicant if the city is asking for the annexation versus?
There's no cost to an annexation.
Okay, got it, okay, thanks. Yes, I'd like to ask the applicant, just curious as to why the application was not, why the county property was not annexed into the city? Is there any particular reason for that? Just want to understand, because it seems like duplicative processes, you know?
My name's Scott Hare. I work for the Charles Gertrude Everett Trust, the applicant, and I worked at Green Frog Market from 1980, actually, 1978, until it actually closed, and had the pleasure of running that store until it did close. One of the things through the years of being in that community, the people that are northwest of the store there, there were apparently some just vicious annexation fights in, I don't know, 60s at some point, but the neighborhood on that side that's in the county is vociferously against annexation. And so I didn't want to put, risk putting the project in the middle of an annexation thing while we're trying to get our lending set up and all, everything set up to do this project. So made the decision to just hold off until we get it done, and you'll still have a Dollar General location on site that I don't know how that would work into it or not on the corner there. But I always thought that that would be a great piece to annex into the city. Probably should have been done a long time ago, so that's why we didn't do it.
Follow-up, thank you for that, sir. Follow-up question for staff, if this were annexed in the future, would that count towards our housing numbers since it's, it's only, I think it's 84 units total, right? And only eight of those are in the city? Or 16 in the city, sorry, eight single and eight double, two-bedroom, yeah?
The question would be is if the county is counting that towards their arena. If the county is counting that towards their arena, we are in discussions right now. If we were to annex that in, we may then incorporate those arena numbers into ours, so our arena numbers would go higher to offset what we would gain.
Commissioner Strickland?
Follow-up question based on what the applicant said for city or for staff, are they able to request an annexation of just their property? Would they require to annex those to the northwest as well?
The logical boundary that we would look at is Alta Vista right now. Although we, ultimately, we would like to see a larger annexation, but we would not necessarily, to go forward with this annexation, we would want the corner piece that's left out along Alta Vista.
Got it, yeah, so not just their property, but a little bit, okay, thank you.
We don't need rebuttal, do we? Since no one, okay. So at this moment, I will now close the public hearing on item and return to the commission for comment and action.
Well, firstly, with comment, I would say these are the kinds of projects we need to see, so I'm supportive. I would have liked to have seen some low or moderate income provision in here, but we can't mandate that, so if we can't build them on, not Bernard, I don't know where we can build low-income housing, so that, that aspect, I'm disappointed that we don't have any, any provision for that. But on the whole, these are the kinds of units that we need to see, the kinds of projects we need to do. I like to see that, I'm happy that the city and the county could come to an agreement on, you know, how that looks and get through without bogging down the builder to a significant degree. So in that respect, I'm supportive of this project, and barring any other information, I would make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you for your motion. I will let Mr. Strickland and then Mr. Cader's after that. Were you going to make a motion? Okay, so then you'll probably be the second when Mr. Cader's done. Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to say, I've always liked this neighborhood street within our city. I think it's an interesting example of a mixed-use, mostly single-family neighborhood, and it's, this has always been a piece of property that makes the neighborhood feel more disjointed than it really is. And so, yeah, I applaud the effort to infill a new housing stock. It does also highlight the battle that we have from where county and city draw lines, and it's, I feel like this is a, on a micro scale, what we deal with on pretty much every, actually, pretty much everywhere in the city. I don't think there's anywhere that's free of this. So my hope is that, as a city and county, we can keep working together to logically simplify boundaries, but as far as this project, it's good to see new housing stock, rental housing stock. I appreciate the Green Frog shout-out. I miss Green Frog more often than not, and yeah, I would support this project.
Commissioner Neal?
I just have a question for staff, sorry, because this already looks kind of funky the way that the boundaries are drawn between city and county anyways. I'm just wondering why, firstly, I'm wondering, the portion of the property that's right here on the curve on the bottom right, left-hand side of the picture, is that city, in the Yes. So why couldn't we, if we wanted to annex, how, why did we need to do the natural line of Alta Vista? Because as it currently stands, there's a funky line anyways, so if this property owner did want to annex, why couldn't we just go with their, with their property line?
LAFCO is ultimate approval on these, and LAFCO would look at having a boundary that would probably be along Alta Vista, and that way, your utilities would all go to the same area, rather than, like, right now, we have the KSA that takes care of the sewer for the county portion, and then we have the city sewer, and if you start splitting up, you can kind of see, just to the east, you can see the C2 zone right there, that is serviced by the KSA, Kern Sanitation Authority, but it's within the city, and if you're, if you're within the city, we want you connected to city services. So they could ask for it, but LAFCO would say you need to at least go to Alta Vista.
Okay.
Make it a logical boundary.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Thank you. So when I look at these, I look at, is it good for the city, which I think this project is? I think this is a good area. I kind of mimic Commissioner Coman that I would have liked to see maybe not just Marguerite Plus, but that is what it is. I'm still a little hung up on the apartments on the southwest facing the monopole. I don't know if I fully agree that there's not a landscaping option there that would provide a better view for residents of that side, rather than just looking directly at a communication monopole, with those two being bedrooms, and you would assume that the beds would be on the opposite side, because there's the window that's their view every morning, so that, that one, I'm not, I'm not too hung up on a condition for, just I wanted to state that, you know, I still think there's an option to make, you know, two families for the next 30 years have a better view in the morning than a metal structure. I would like to ask staff to help craft a condition to make sure, because the map set doesn't match the development plans, doesn't match kind of what the county heard versus what we've stated, I would like a condition to state approval pending, adding in that wrought iron fence, the eight-foot, you know, I don't, I don't want to just take it on word here. I would like to get that added and then back to development to review and approve before construction is issued. I don't know the verbiage on that, but that would be the... Can I get staff to help me craft the verbiage of that motion? If, unless there was discussion, at least the landscaping portion, I don't, no.
No, no, thank you, because we had this conversation, so staff is prepared with a condition. As you noted, the site plan shows a chain-link fence, so we will have a condition that will match very similar to what the county's condition is for wrought iron fence. I would also note, though, that the landscape plans do not show any landscaping along that boundary, so you, you can either add a condition to require it, or you can just rely on the applicant to install the landscaping that they so desire. I do know there's different options for landscaping. You have Italian cypress, which grows kind of ugly, but they grow tall and fast, or, you know, we can put in some shade trees that's consistent with the surrounding boundary. And again, you can, we can leave that to the applicant to make that decision, unless you want to add a condition.
And like I said, that landscaping, you know, I'd kind of looked at the rest of the commission, I don't want to be the only one driving it, that's just a concern I had.
I saw it on the Google Maps, too, and I thought it was an eyesore for someone to look at in the morning, too. So if you wanted to make a motion to add a condition that the portion of the property in the city have an eight-foot fence, iron fence, and also a condition that there's a 24-by-24-inch box where a tree for shading or whatever would go, and maybe staff can help with that portion, I would second that motion, so.
Then I would like to make that motion that we described for both conditions, for landscaping for that southwest section or that, that linear footage there for the monopole side, and the condition for an eight-foot wrought iron fence.
Before I read those conditions, is there any other comments from commissioners?
I have a question. So if we make a request that condition, does that apply to the full property that includes the county, county side as well, or it only applies to what is in cities premises?
Your jurisdiction is limited to just the city. However, the condition that we would craft for the wrought iron fence is in, in line with what the county's condition is for wrought iron fence.
Okay.
So I think a motion is made and a second was made. Can we have a vote?
Well, let me, let me read the two conditions to make sure it's exactly what, what your commission's looking for. So I'll start with the perimeter fence, so we add a condition 3B2, which would say, prior to issuance of a building permit for building five, which is the city building, the site plan shall be revised to reflect perimeter fencing as an eight-foot-tall wrought iron fence with spires a minimum of six inches apart on center and located outside the ultimate road right-of-way. The revised site plan shall be submitted to the city planning director for review and approval. Then we will add a condition 3B3, prior to issuance of a building permit for building five, the landscape plans shall be revised, now if you want to include 24-inch-box trees along the project site boundary between building five and adjacent city property developed with a wireless telecommun, telecommunication facility. The revised landscape plan shall be consistent with approved perimeter landscaping and submitted to the city planning director for review and approval. 24-inch box, but our, again, before we add consistent with the approved perimeter landscaping, is that the type of trees do you want, the evergreen and deciduous, or do you want more of an Italian cypress that's tall? Because if your concern is the second story, you would want taller.
My concern's the second story, so something that would give some kind of natural block, you know?
Year-round.
Yeah, yeah, if possible, year-round, that'd be, I don't know, cypress.
I'll amend that to say the revised landscape plans shall be provided in a manner for screening of the second floor, second story, and submitted to the city planning director for review and approval.
Yep, thank you. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
So the motion was from Strickland, and then the second was Neal?
Commissioner Neal, yeah. Commissioner Neal, yeah. Can we try again? It disappeared.
Yes, I'm clearing the votes. Give me a minute, please.
Oh, you're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 7, reports.
Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with the report, the reports item?
You know, it's always my pleasure to have David Lyman, the manager of Visit Bakersfield, come and speak in front of your commission. He's done it several times, but I do know there are new commissioners on board, always I will turn this over to Mr. Lyman. This may be his last time to speak in front of your commission, as we have some pending retirement coming, maybe, maybe we can hang on to him longer. Mr. Lyman?
Thank you. Members of the commission, good afternoon, or I guess it's good evening now. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening. All of you have a copy of our guide here. This is the lady that's on the cover, and the two questions I'm always asked are, who is she and will she be here? The answer is, I don't know, and no. However, I am her substitute, so I am, David Lyman, I'm manager of Visit Bakersfield, and I thank you for the invitation, Mr. Johnson, this evening, and to share with you some of the things that were happening at Visit Bakersfield. For those of you, oh, let me tell you what I'm going to talk about. I am going to share with you the economic impacts of travel and tourism, or how we help people spend their money in California's ninth-largest city. For those of you who are not familiar with Visit Bakersfield, I will tell you about it in a minute, but first, we're going to start out with a quiz, and I'm going to ask you 10 questions about Bakersfield, and we'll see how much you all know about Bakersfield. You all have been given an official Bakersfield, Visit Bakersfield pen with an official Visit Bakersfield post-it note. I'm going to ask you 10 questions. You're going to write them down, okay? You all have your official Bakersfield pen, right? Okay, and then we'll kind of come back at the end and see who has the most answers, correct answers, and that one or two, or however many of you have the correct answers, you will win a prize. You're shaking your head like no one's ever done this before. Good for me. Okay, so question number one, what's the largest convention that visits, that visits in Bakersfield each year? What's the largest convention that visits Bakersfield each year? Write it down, don't spit, don't shout it out. Question number two, what is the closest outfitter to City Hall where you can go river rafting in the summer? What's the closest outfitter to City Hall where you can go river rafting in the summer? Question number three, a plaque commemorating the actual location of Baker's Field is located near the front of what Bakersfield Hotel? Where will you find that plaque commemorating the official, the original location of Baker's Field? Question number four, what Bakersfield Hotel was named by Sunset as one of the 17 most unique hotels in the West? Question number five, what is the oldest continually operating community theater in Where will you find that plaque commemorating the official, the original location of Baker's Field? Question number four, what Bakersfield Hotel was named by Sunset as one of the 17 most unique hotels in the West? Question number five, what is the oldest continually operating community theater in Question number six, you all should know this, how many Bakersfield freeway exits are there on 99? I know you pay attention when you drive in and out in Bakersfield. You're shaking your head, okay. How many Bakersfield freeway exits are there on 99? There's a sign, just like that. Next, how many exits? Question number seven, Second Phase Brewery is located at 1004 19th Street in downtown Bakersfield. What was the original use of that building? Question number eight, this is a multi-panel mural by Al Hirschfield, and it features an array of caricatures of old Hollywood stars, and is one of only six such products in the world. Inside what Bakersfield Tavern is it located? Question number nine, what Bakersfield Hotel has more hotel guest rooms than any other Bakersfield Hotel? In essence, what's Bakersfield's largest hotel? I heard a sigh there, so we'll end the question here. Number 10, a display of bricks that were salvaged and reclaimed from Bakersfield's original brewery circa 1912 can be found inside what Bakersfield Brewery? And that's the picture of the old brewery. Okay, those are the 10 questions. Let's see how you did. What's the largest convention that visits Bakersfield every year? Excuse me, council, are they allowed to shout out, or do I have, do they have to go through the chair? Okay, good. What's the largest convention that visits Bakersfield each year? It is Jehovah's Witness Convention. Yeah, okay, yeah, well, we have one. Okay, that's all right, we're not checking for spelling. Okay, what, witnesses? Oh, okay. Question number two, oh, there's the answer, Jehovah's Witnesses. This is a shot of them in the Mechanics Bank Arena. Question number two, what's the closest outfitter to City Hall where you can go river rafting every summer? River's End Rafting, correct. 15701 Highway 178, about 20 minutes from here. We all love Kernville, but you can go river rafting in the city of Bakersfield. Question number three, the plaque commemorating Colonel Bakersfield is near the, near what Bakersfield Hotel? The Marriott at the convention center. How many times have you driven past there? Question number four, what Bakersfield Hotel was named one of the 17 most unique hotels in the West? The Padre Hotel. Very good, okay, yay. Question number five, what's the oldest continually operating community theater in California? Bakersfield Community Theater, correct. How many Bakersfield freeway exits are there on 99?
13.
There are two correct answers to this, ladies and gentlemen, as I was told when I made this presentation to one group, and they corrected me. From the south, there are 13, and from the north, there are 12. Okay, so there are two correct answers, okay? Second Phase Brewery is located on 19th Street. What was the original use of that building?
Laundry.
You want to be more clarif, clear? Sam Woo Chinese Laundry, very good. I would ask you what was across the street, but we don't have enough time. Where would you find this multi-panel Al Hirschfield mural? Guthrie's Alley Cat, absolutely correct. Go, go right, go right in, and it's on the wall, right there, okay? What's Bakersfield's largest hotel? The answer is the Doubletree Hotel. The Doubletree Hotel has 262 rooms, the Marriott Hotel has 259. Where would you find the display of original bricks from Bakersfield's original brewery? You will find them inside of Temblor, okay? So, okay, so who had at least one correct answer? Who had at least two? Who had at least three? Okay, who had at least four? Who had at least five? No, wait a minute, you couldn't have had no four and then have five. Okay, we have, okay, you have at least five. Who has, we have at least five? Who has at least six? Who has at least seven? Well, no, you all, okay, well, I'll give one to staff and one to the, one to the commission, because I have to be politically correct, okay? So, okay, so let me, I will give the prize afterwards. You all get an official Bakersfield magnet, okay? Very good. So thank you all for playing. Those are questions you can share with your family and friends. And you know, I gave, I gave the clerk the slide deck so she could prepare, I don't... So for those of you who don't know anything about Visit Bakersfield, we are on this funky little building down the street in front of the Amtrak Station, next to the Kern Veterans Memorial at 515 Truckston Avenue. It says Visitor Center outside, but we serve a lot of different clientele, including human resources professionals, people interviewing for jobs, new residents, real estate professionals, business owners, real estate investors, and a whole lot of referrals. So even though it says Visitor Center, we really are the Bakersfield Information Center. And I equate us to the old Pacific Bill Yellow Pages commercial, which used to say, if it isn't in here, it probably doesn't exist, okay? We are funded solely by the transient occupancy tax, TOT, otherwise known as the hotel tax revenue. We are not funded by the general fund or PSVS measure and monies, and we are an example of an absolutely positively successful public-private partnership between the city of Bakersfield and the Greater Bakersfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. Their Board of Directors, whose names appear here, have been a continuing source of counsel and professional support during the, during the last 16 years, and have been key to our success. We are a division of the City Manager's Office, and yes, our goal is to help people spend their money in California's ninth-largest city. I'm told that will be on my tombstone. Hopefully not for a long time. When I tell people what I do, they, everybody always says, oh, travel and tourism, that, that's nice, we like. And if I asked you, you would probably say, oh, it's nice. And I'm glad people think travel and tourism is nice, but I would like you to appreciate for something else, because travel and tourism is full of dollar signs. The tourism helps power Bakersfield's economy. That visitor spending creates and retains jobs, and it generates local sales tax and TOT revenue. And that TOT revenue supports public safety, quality-of-life efforts, and helps fund the city's capital needs. Here is a chart of the TOT revenue in the city of Bakersfield back since fiscal year 2007-08. You can see the dip in the Great Recession. This last year was estimated to bring in $11.5 million, the highest it's ever been. You can see the drop expected during the pandemic, but we have roared out of the pandemic to reach the highest level we ever have, and that's $11.5 million. That TOT is 12% charged onto hotel rates. I want to show you the direct economic impact of those people staying the night in Bakersfield Hotels. Let's go back to that TOT revenue for the last year, it was estimated $11.5 million. Now, that's 12% that's charged. What was the room rate? Will we divide that simply by 12%, and we get $96 million? Add it together, you get almost $108 million. That's the amount of money that people left on their front counters when they checked out of hotels in the city of Bakersfield last fiscal year, almost $108 million. That just includes direct economic impact from hotel spending. It does not include spending on what I call the three F's, three F's of food, fuel, and fun. People often tell me, it must be difficult to get people to come to Bakersfield. Absolutely not. Have you stood out the freeway? Do you see how many people come in out of Bakersfield? Do you see how many people come in out of the train? It's not a problem to get people to come to Bakersfield. The challenge is to get them to come and stop and spend their money. Fortunately, we are near four national parks, which people love to do, visit, and also connect to Las Vegas. And if you're familiar with the highway system in California, to get between those national parks and Las Vegas, you have to come through Bakersfield, okay? So we target a lot of those people that are staying in or around national parks as well as Las Vegas. I'm going to share with you in a few minutes our successes in the last year, how do we target those people to spend their money? We've had great success with several savings passes. One is the Bakersfield Selfie Trail. You get it on your device, like this. The Bakersfield Selfie Trail has about 20 unique locations around Bakersfield. You check in with at least 12, and you win a t-shirt and hat combo or an official Bakersfield Yeti. This has been an outstanding success for us. This has got, this has legs. This has been far more successful than we had ever expected. Just in the last year, we've had almost 2,000 people check in, and almost 200 people come and redeem their prizes. This is a great project for people to do when they're new to Bakersfield or they're passing through, they want to know what's going on. We've had people who are bringing their, their kids to Cal State, and what, I'm concerned about the community, what are we going to do? They get to feel, get to feel for the community really fast. My favorite story is a group of ladies from Channel 29 who decided to do the Bakersfield Selfie Trail on a Saturday on Bird Scooters, okay? The Bakersfield Kern County Wine Trail is our newest savings pass. It connects the tasting rooms in Bakersfield with wineries in Tehachapi. It's new, but we've had 173 signups so far and 79 prize redemptions. The Grandaddy has been our brewery trail. It started out as the Bakersfield Brewery Trail with six breweries. We expanded that to include all breweries in Bakersfield, as well as breweries in Taft, Tehachapi, and Kernville. Just in this last year, we've had 125 prize redemptions, and 1,600 people that have checked in, and we know where they're from because they have to tell us. So we've had visitors from as far away as Italy, France, Portugal, and throughout the United States. Now, these are individuals, but how do we get group travel? I want to tell you, group travel is very important, and I want to take you back real quickly to a year ago, February, and the second week in February was the World Ag Expo in Tulare. Many of you are familiar with the World Ag Expo. It's like the agriculture woodstock of the world. People from throughout the globe come to Tulare. Why do we in Bakersfield care about the World Ag Expo in Tulare? It's because in Tulare, they don't have enough hotel rooms. So all those people, most of those people fly into and stay in Fresno and Bakersfield. And so we saw last year, just as we were coming out of the pandemic, that occupancy in Bakersfield Hotels at that time were up 17%. The ADR, which is the average daily rate in hotels, was up 12%, and RevPAR, which is revenue per available room, was up 33% just from the year before. And this was just from those days when the World Ag Expo was going on in Tulare. We couldn't rest, because the next week, it was time for CIF Boys and Girls Wrestling. Every last weekend in February is always wrestling, so plan for that. The next couple of weeks, it's CIF Wrestling at Mechanics Bank Arena. Unfortunately, that was the same weekend that we had, I think it was called an atmospheric river. Sound familiar? Okay, just like what we're having outside here. So we noticed that a lot of reservations were canceled at the last minute, because the weatherman was telling people, you can get into Bakersfield, but you might not be able to get out, okay? It was like the Hotel California lyrics. So we found the occupancy, ADR, and RevPAR were down slightly, but attendance was up almost 20, or more than 27%. This is a very popular event that brings a lot of people to the arena. Following the last weekend in February is the first weekend in March, and that is March Meet at Pomosa Drag Strip. And this event was rained out for one day, they extended for one day, no problem, the occupancy was up 7%, ADR was up, and RevPAR was up almost 11% for those four days. Not finished yet, the following week was Golden State Nationals, it's BMX at Metro BMX on Chester Avenue. This was the largest BMX Nationals in the United States. Occupancy, ADR, and RevPAR were up significantly. These are groups that come, and that's just a snapshot of two months last year. So group travel is very important, and we're continuing to look for those groups to come to Bakersfield. We also sponsor a number of events, such as the October Classic at Kern County Raceway Park, where we call ourselves the racing capital of California, because we have four racetracks in or near Bakersfield. Cars are also very important, we, at the ones that don't go quite as fast, at the National Street Rods, they're here every year. They've been coming here for almost 40 years. They meet at the Kern County Fairgrounds. As I mentioned, Jehovah's Witnesses is our largest group. They will be back here again. They were not here for three years, but they came back last year, and they will be here again this summer. The occupancy was up almost 18%. ADR was not up so much, because they negotiate very favorable rates with hotel rooms, with hotelers during the summer. RevPAR was up 18%. We have a number of softball, soccer, and baseball tournaments. If you have youth, you will tell me, you will know that there are a lot of groups that come and play soccer and softball in Bakersfield. How do we get those groups here? Well, we have a sales staff that continues to go around the nation and make the pitch. Last year, we attended, we had 12 different showcases and trade shows that we attended in the United States and Canada, and those resulted in seven onsite visits. Not myself a lot, but that is a lot. That's the most we've ever had in one year, where we actually have convinced the site selectors to come to Bakersfield, look at our community, look at the sports venue, and choose Bakersfield. We also rely on our printed material. As you see, we have our official Bakersfield Visitors Guide, or Insider's Guide, we call it, the Insider's Guide, because it has all those insider tips, because I'll tell you something, our staff has a combined almost 200 years living in Bakersfield. Now, granted, I have the majority of that number, but, but we have almost 200 years. We went through 30,000 very, very quickly, and we had to print another 30,000. These are distributed at all Bakersfield Hotels, places like the Amtrak Station, welcome centers throughout California, and also at 220-something locations in Las Vegas. We also appear either in advertising or in articles in a number of local, regional, international magazines throughout the year, including this last one, which we made it on the cover of Food and Travel Magazine. We sell swag. If you need the official Bakersfield t-shirts, hats, keychains, magnets, we have them. We do not compete with the private sector. We do not sell anything that they sell at Bobby's Hallmark. We only sell products that people come in and ask for that can't find anywhere else. So if you're looking for your official Bakersfield swag, we're open Monday through Friday, we're closed for lunch between, but we are open between 8:00 and 5:00. We have increased our social media presence across several platforms. We have an outstanding social media vendor, Cypress Avenue, they are local, and you will continue to see us appearing all kinds of places in social media. Our work plan for the coming year, we are growing our social media presence. We're continuing to be on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, but you will continue to see us being out there and covering more events. We are going to create a new savings pass. I would love to tell you what it is, but I would not be able to show my face back to work tomorrow if I gave it a preview. We are creating a GPS-based audio driving tour. We have a driving tour right now, but it's printed, and if you're by yourself, it's kind of hard to follow directions and look where you're going. So this is a GPS-based audio tour. I did a drive-through with the vendor Monday. I think it's going to be really good, and it's, of course, you know, Bakersfield is so large, we can't show everything, but this company has done audio driving tours in other communities, and we're very, very excited to see this completed. We're going to continue to, continue to attend trade shows around the United States to promote Bakersfield. We're going to continue to attend trade shows around the United States to promote Bakersfield as a meeting and events destination. This is one of our sales staff here at a show in Oklahoma City. This August, Bakersfield will be hosting the California Hispanic Chambers of Commerce Annual Convention downtown, and then we will also be, again, hosting Water National Ski Championships for the next two years. We like multi-year agreements, because that provides us with planning opportunities for hotels, and also to make sure that we have the money in our budget to bring them here. So we like multi-year contracts. There's going to be some changes in the Bakersfield Hotel Room Inventory. In April, we're expecting 105 new rooms to open at the New Hampton Inn on Easton Drive. So that's good, but I put my accounting hat on, because on the other side of the ledger, we have a loss of 39 rooms at the Red Roof Inn, 36 rooms lost at the Manila Inn, and 152 rooms at the Howard Johnson's for negative 226. So we expect to end the year within that loss of 121 hotel rooms in the Bakersfield market. For those of you who don't know this, Bakersfield is much larger than many people think. These are the figures from the Census Bureau. Bakersfield at the time was 52nd largest city in California, larger than places like Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, or St. Louis, Missouri. But when you look at the size of their destination marketing organizations, St. Louis has 61, Visit Pittsburgh has 43, Visit Bakersfield has five. So for those of you math wizards, you're looking at 20% of our staff here to try to sell California's ninth-largest city. So I'm happy to answer the question, is how can you help us? First of all, I would like to encourage you to bring your groups to Bakersfield. You're all probably members of a religious organization, fraternal organization, social organization, business organization. Those groups meet somewhere, and the reason they usually meet where they do is because somebody in that organization recognizes the economic impact that that group meeting will have on their community. So please, give us a call, we'll help you put the proposal together, you get all the credit. We're happy to do that. Also, tell us about your events and festivals. There's a lot going on in Bakersfield. We have a dynamic events calendar, but we can't sell what we don't know about. So if you do have an event, you can go onto our webpage at visitbakersfield.com, submit your event, it's free, it's very easy, people have lived to tell about it. Just put them on there, when it's on there, our social media vendor will pick up that information and also sell it again on our social media platforms. Also, we have this cool electronic sign out front of our office, so people driving up and down Truckston Avenue will learn about your event. We do all of this for free. Second, give us information about your attraction or amenity. This is our display rack, people come in all the time. We can't have room for everything, we have more stuff in the back, but if you have an event, excuse me, an amenity or an attraction, or you know somebody that does, would be interesting to visitors and even locals, please let us know. And lastly, I'm looking to you all to be an ambassador for Bakersfield with family and friends, because people will come and stay with you or ask, what should I do? And see, I don't want anybody to say, mm. So that's what I'm looking for. Before I close and open it for questions, I would like to just take a quick detour. Thank Mr. Johnson for his invitation. As he mentioned, I'll be retiring soon, and I have appeared, or have projects appeared also in front of the Planning Commission over parts of the last four decades. I began, I don't think anybody here was here when I started. I started in 1984 as a, you probably don't know this, as a temporary planning tech. I was a planning technician, and I started in 1984. My job was to package Small Business Administration 503, now 504 loans to local small businesses, and also to administer the facade improvement grant program in the downtown redevelopment area. Obviously, I passed probation. I went the ranks of assistant planner, associate planner, principal planner. I think that was the longest I spent in any position in the city of Bakersfield, was principal planner. When I, early in my career, I was the staff lead person for the 19th Street Specific Plan, which I know no one has heard of, because I think I have the last copy, it was hot. I love that plan, I think I have the last copy in existence. It did win an APA Central Section Award, but it was never implemented. I was a staff person for the Baker Street Specific Plan. That was a plan that was close to my heart, because I'm an East Side fellow, and I spent years of my youth in the Tohome Theater. Separately, I also spent years of my life at the miniature golf course, which was on the site of the apartment complex that was mentioned, and I think anybody knows, it used to be a miniature golf course. So that was a project close to my heart, the Baker Street Specific Plan. I know it was adopted, it was later rescinded. I was involved with the two, formation of the two redevelopment project areas, Old Town Kern and Southeast. I started out as one of the minions, and halfway through, they put me in charge of getting that all the way through, which we did, with no lawsuits, it came to the Planning Commission. When you form one redevelopment project area, it's quite involved. Two, it about drove us to drink. But we made it, we made it. That was adopted, redevelopment was later eliminated at state level, so that's gone. My last project that came before the Planning Commission was the Mill Creek Linear Park, and I oversaw the grant team that put our original grant application together for the State Department of Parks. That not only was implemented, it's still there. I think it's kind of hard to rescind a public works project, but that was mine, and it won an award. This is a picture that most of you have not seen. You will recognize Mr. Coman there. Mr. Coman was the chair of the Redevelopment Agency. I think he was the only person who's been the chair of the Redevelopment Agency and the Planning Commission sometime during his life, and that was us accepting the award from the California Redevelopment Association in 2001 in San Jose, because we won the award for public spaces and linkages. So I appreciate your time today, and I thank you very much, and I will wrap it up by inviting you to check us out. Everything that's going on in Bakersfield, you can find at Visit Bakersfield, we're on the web, check us out at visitbakersfield.com. Like us on Facebook, follow us on Instagram, or visit us the old-fashioned way in person at 515 Truckston Avenue. Thank you for your attention, and I'd be delighted to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Neal.
I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, very entertaining, and nobody ever plays games with us.
You mean literally?
Never. So that was really fun. I did, I am a Baker, I grew up here and graduated, went away for 18 years, and then came back and got on the commission, and so it's really exciting, because so much has changed in the time that I was away, that I actually, and I didn't drive when I was here before, I left at 17, came back at 35. So I have a lot to learn about my city, and I have been on your website, and I have printed out your downtown restaurants and your trails and et cetera, and it's on my list to check all those things off, so I can really say I'm from Bakersfield, because it's so different now, and people expect me to know a lot, because I'm on commission and because I'm from here, but I went away for a very long time. So thank you for all the resources, it's been wonderful for us.
We have anything else you need, let us know, we can fill that gap for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
I just want to thank you for coming out, your presentation was very entertaining. I am new to the city, I've been here about, not, I've been here about two years, and I moved here from Vegas, and people thought I was crazy moving to Bakersfield. Why are you moving to Bakersfield? What is there to do? But now I know about your website, I can definitely go on there, and then, I do have the app, actually, I found out about your app a couple of weeks ago. So I downloaded the app, and I'm really looking forward to your voice tour, that, I hope you're actually hosting, you're doing it, because you have the voice of the radio, radio talkie? Is that, radio, yeah. So, well, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm not the voice, but I.
I hope you are.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coman.
Thank you, Chair Besir Tash. Mr. Lyman.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. You addressed me, I said, Mr. Cohen.
I'm sorry. I wanted to thank you for your presentation, but I also would be remiss if I didn't thank you for all your contributions to the city of Bakersfield over the years. I do remember those days with the Redevelopment Agency, and some projects were easier than others, but some of them are standing the test of time. So I want to thank you for your contributions in that matter, and what a great job you've done, building up this, this Visit Bakersfield Agency. You've done an awesome job in this whole presentation, everything you've done for that group, building up our tourism, so thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
And I would like a copy of that picture.
How much? Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strickland.
Just to say thanks as well, great presentation. After you retire, if you'd like to come and just sit here and give jokes at the end, I think we could get you on the agenda, I'm sure, right? Yeah, no, that's great, you know, I've been, I moved here from South Carolina about 14 years ago, and the first six or seven I spent doing the whole, well, it's the weekend, I got to get out of Bakersfield, and the last, you know, five or six years, I've really kind of turned inward, and I spend more time here. So I look forward to coming by, seeing you guys at the Visitor Center, and looking at some recommendations for more stuff to do to explore, so thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Biddle.
I want to say thank you for going out and bringing these conferences and these events back to Bakersfield. As a downtown business owner, it makes a giant difference in our business. We know when the Jehovah Witness Convention's coming to town, because those type of people come and they flood our local restaurants and our businesses with love and money, so I really, really want to thank you for that. Same with the wrestling competition, I mean, there's not a thing that you didn't talk about that doesn't bring people to our downtown area and really creating what we want. So thank you for your time here with us, we're really going to miss you, and I agree, come take a few nights and sit with us in the stands.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I did not recognize my hard-working staff. They do all the work, and I, they make me look good when I come to make the presentation, but I will pass your comments along.
And I will tell you, they're doing a great job. They gave me a phone call a couple of weeks ago, asking about downtown businesses, so they're reaching out, they're trying to find who those new business owners are, and they're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you for letting me know, thank you.
Vice Chair Kater.
Mr. Lyman, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I agree with Commissioner Biddle, it's exciting to see events that were exciting the first time we got them now become things we expect every year, and to keep building off of that. It's really exciting, and as a downtown business owner and resident, the energy changes when we get to open up our welcome mats to the larger community, the state, the world, and thank you for being such a big part of that. And I agree with everyone else, you're always welcome at the commission, even if you're not.
I dance, too.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Johnson, could you please schedule a choreographed dance? I just want to say thank you so much.
I appreciate it very much, thank you so much.
I guess I can just copy everyone and say thank you as well. You get me fired up to be a resident of Bakersfield, seeing all this stuff, it's just really exciting. I'm going to download this video at some later time and make people watch it, just because it's difficult now with TV not being the same for people to know, and I appreciate all the different avenues that you guys have set up for residents and people visiting to engage our community. I love the sense of pride, and I appreciate you and the many years that you've put in to this community and your staff, so thank you, thank you so much.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the comments, and I will get the prizes, I will follow up decorum, and then afterwards, I will come and distribute the prizes, okay? Thank you again, appreciate it.
Mr. Johnson, I hope you took notes, that's how you entertain us, all right? I'm just kidding.
I told him we have a vacancy for Assistant Planning Director.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, communications.
Does staff have any communication items at this moment?
Yes, so we will have a meeting February 15th. At that meeting, we will be considering the updates to the zoning ordinance in support of the housing element for the general plan. I know we, some of you have attended the stakeholders' meeting, we appreciate that, but that will be an important meeting. And also, right now, we're 99% sure we will have a special meeting on the February 29th. I do understand one of you will not be in attendance, but we would be looking for at least quorum, and I'll be sending out an email to confirm that next Monday at the latest. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, commission comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments they'd like to make? Mr. Strickland.
I promise, I'm not going to press the button every time. Can I ask a question to staff in this time, or?
Yeah.
So our next agenda is going to be following up kind of what we talked about today. Is there anything in between?
Are you asking, is there any meetings in between, like Planning Commission meetings or stakeholder meetings?
No, specifically related to kind of meeting with Director Boyle. I feel like some of the stuff from today maybe were left somewhat open.
I know Director Boyle indicated he would like to try to have one more stakeholder meeting that may or may not occur between now and the Planning Commission meeting, that may occur between the Planning Commission and when it goes to City Council.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 10, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:34 on February 1st, 2024. Thank you so much, everyone.